And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Oh, nope. I apologize. We're gonna start with roll call first. Just a drill.
Michelle Brecken.
Here.
DJ Donneler.
Here.
Stephanie Ederman.
Here.
Randy Heidman.
I am here.
Sarah Spear.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Thanks, Kelly. And now, we will do Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting of the Brainerd School Board is being conducted in accordance with the Minnesota Statutes 13D .02. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording is available on the school district's YouTube channel. We will look for an approval of the agenda as presented. And just a note, there has been an amendment to the agenda, so it is an amended agenda. The amendment came out of our work session to add for new business for Action, a number three, to pause testing for kindergarteners for the Agit program.
So you're looking for approval for the amended?
For the amended agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Director Heidman, a second by Director Edeman. All those in favor, we will do a roll call.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Ward.
So I see that the St. Francis Agreement was not on the current agenda. Is that right? Is that correct?
That is correct. That was pulled off the agenda. It was a mistake. We don't have to have that on the agenda through the school board. So that was taken.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for asking. All right. So we will do a roll call vote for the approval of the agenda.
DJ Donneler.
Yes.
Stephanie Ederman.
Yes.
Randy Heidman.
Yes.
Sarah Spear.
Yes.
John Ward.
Yes.
Michelle Brecken.
Yep. Thanks, Kelly. All right. We'll move on to some congratulations that are in order. And I'll read a number of these, and then I'm gonna ask Principal Raski to come up. She's got a number here at the end as well. So to start off with, I believe we have in the room, actually, so this is gonna surprise this person, but I'm gonna ask Mariana Cowell to stand up, please. The Brainerd Community Action and Brainerd J.C.'s recognized her as the Youth Volunteer Citizen of the Year. Congratulations. That is just fantastic. Thank you for representing so well, and we're so proud of you. Awesome. Up next, we've got John Cowell and Bree Blazing for qualifying for the Minnesota State Hikes School League Tournament in cross-country, and the Warrior Girls Swimming and Diving Team, Section 8A Double-A Champions, and Avery Dear earned Section 8 Double-A Swimmer of the Year, and Coach Dan Anderson named the Section 8 Double-A Coach of the Year. And then, we've got a number of state qualifiers: Isabel Plouffe, Avery Dear, Eryland Marcello, Ally Riley, Kaya Iske, and Blair Alquist as well. The Warrior Robotics Team, congratulations for earning the judges' award in the Northern Minnesota Robotics Conference. And the FFA team is the Region Two Champions in Parliamentary Procedure and our Minnesota State FFA Winter Leadership Summit Qualifier. And we did have them come and present one time to do parliamentary, which I enjoyed because I learned a lot. And Jazz band musicians earning all conference honors: Arabelle Boyzen, Logan Daniels, Abigail Isaacson, Carter Machie, Gillian McCartel, Owen Olson, and Mia Sapinski. Congratulations to all of them. And I'm gonna invite Principal Raski up to announce some celebrations from NISWA.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and thank you for reading our student names every month. I really appreciate you. You're like, "Is Miss Raski here?" No? Okay. You always pronounce them very well. So this month, we celebrate students that show great leadership and trustworthiness. And those students that were honored this month at our Warrior Way Rally were Winston Bitter, Brixley Brier Tennis. Thank you for doing this. Olivia Hedlund, Violetta Oskar, Snyder, Reagan Schenk, Natalie Wolfley, Rory Carbahal, Blake Coon, Isla Sanow, Aurora Nickaborn, Dawson Cruz, Wells Hermanson, Daphne Heath, Matthew Lunzick, Ryan Rindell, Lucy Nicholson, Lore Stumble, Lyndon Lee, Kirsa Bukhos, Finn Pedersen, Talia Podolski, Norman Schwartz, Cora Parks, and then Ellen Marsh. We also celebrate students who show great grit, institutiveness, and those winners were bricking before: Grace Padronos. I'm so sorry, Grace. So sorry. Nolan Anderson, Charlie Hess, Elliot Schrock, Lena Bates, Piper Shimick, Christian Marsh, Emmett Brozy, Noah Rozinsky, Jackson Wegemeister, and Maeve Randwaller. I also want to thank so many Brainerd High School students who came out to our Spooktacular this year. Our Spooktacular was like no other this year because of them. They came out, and we had 20 sign up, but 30 showed up. And so they had so many... They had a blast. They dressed up. They interacted with our students. They showed great leadership. And I don't have all their names because I already botched a lot of the ones that I already know. But that was really profound to see how many of our high schoolers signed up and came out to make a night so that the parents could be with their student, and they could really show great leadership. And so I just really appreciate Brainerd High School students and how they just show up for us. No one gave them anything. Gave them a certificate that one of my teachers made, but they got nothing else other than, you know, just the pride in that. So thank you for your enthusiasm, leadership, and positive spirit.
Thanks.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we've got public input. A member of the public can address the board during this time. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Complaints or allegations against students or employees may not be discussed due to data privacy. Complaints or allegations must be submitted in writing to Superintendent Grant. The Board of Education and Superintendent will not converse with guests to address the topics discussed at that time. So we've got a few here tonight, and we are gonna start with Maya Christensen, please. Welcome, Maya. Am I saying that right? Is it Maya or Mia?
It's Mia.
Oh, dang it. Sorry about that. Welcome.
My name is Mia Christensen, and I am a senior in high school. I attended Forest View in fifth grade and MLAP in sixth and seventh. This was recommended to me by a counselor at Forest View because I had struggled with severe social anxiety and something called selective mutism, which basically means that I would go an entire day at school without seeing anything. While this took more than just switching schools for me to get over, having a space like MLAP and the Brainerd Learning Center allowed me to better manage my anxiety and grow in my social and communicative skills. One of the biggest hurdles for me at Forest View was the size. I was intimidated by the crowded spaces, the constant noise, and having lunch with 500 other kids in the cafeteria. MLAP's layout provides a direct contrast to this: a smaller space, smaller classes, and a smaller network of people to see throughout the day. At the time, that was exactly what I needed. I don't think I could have functioned properly if I'd had to stay at Forest View. It probably would have led to homeschooling, one of my parents quitting their job, and me never learning how to leave the house. Because of the support available at MLAP, and because of the option to leave the school where I had struggled, I'm in a much better place now. It might seem like it doesn't matter where MLAP is located, as long as the resources it possesses are still available. But dismissing the value of a safe space is dangerous. For me and my classmates, and I'm sure for the people who go there now, it was crucial to exist in an environment structured to support us. Attending Forest View even under a separate program is not a viable option, especially for those who have had bad experiences there in the past. MLAP cannot be replicated in a building that houses almost 2,000 students. By taking away the Brainerd Learning Center, you would be taking away that safe space from vulnerable students who need it, not only for their mental health, but also for their success in education. It is because of that fact that I'm saying the place to make budget cuts is not BLC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mia. Audience, I apologize. I wholeheartedly think we should applaud that, but this is a public meeting, so I'm gonna ask that we hold our applause and just know that we'd love to applaud these students, and you can thank them later. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Mariana Cowell, please. Welcome, Mariana.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board and community. My name is Mariana Cowell, and I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the proposal to close the Brainerd Learning Center building. I understand that our district is facing difficult financial decisions and that the Learning Center program would continue elsewhere. But I want to make it clear that this decision is not just about a building. It's about the lives that are shaped, and in many cases, saved inside it. The Brainerd Learning Center is not like other schools. It provides a smaller, more personal environment for students who struggle in traditional settings. The building itself plays a crucial role in that. It's accessible, it's safe, it's familiar, and for many students, it's the one place where they finally feel seen, accepted, and supported. Moving the program to another location like Forest View Middle School or Washington Education Center might seem like a simple change on paper, but for many students who attend the Learning Center, it's not. Those larger environments can be overwhelming, stressful, and even unsafe. The bullying and social pressure that many Learning Center students have already escaped from would come right back, and that would undo years of progress emotionally and physically and academically. The Learning Center isn't just an alternative program. It's a lifeline. Taking away its home would send a message to students that the safe space they finally felt like they belonged in doesn't matter. And that's a message I hope none of us want to send. I know these decisions are hard, but I ask you to look beyond the numbers and think about the students, the ones who finally found hope in that building. The cost of closing it may save money in the budget, but the human cost would be far greater. Please keep the Brainerd Learning Center where it belongs, in the building that has given students so many reasons to believe in themselves again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariana. All right. Up next, we have Lisa Christensen, please.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Christensen, and I am the proud parent of Mia who spoke at the beginning. And I too would like to advocate that MLAP and the ALC stay in its current location and not relocate within Forest View walls. When Mia was younger, she struggled tremendously, and my husband and I dove into the research to figure out how to support her. And in the literature, we kept coming across this term called contaminated spaces. And I understand that that word sounds harsh, but the idea behind it is important in that students who struggle with trauma, anxiety, depression, OCD, in her case, selective mutism, trick their brain into thinking spaces are no longer safe because their emotions live in this part of their brain. And once triggered, it's hard to reason with them, and your logical reasoning lives up here, to convince them, like, no, that's, you know, it is a safe space. And so for Mia, having MLAP as an alternative location was all that she needed to work through that time, reset, grow, and rebuild her confidence. Mia wasn't going to brag, but I will. She is graduating this year at the top of her class. She's been offered tens of thousands of dollars on a merit-based scholarship, but most importantly, she stood up here today and spoke to you all. And that is a gift that I will forever be grateful... Sorry, I talk with my hands. To Brainerd Public Schools for having this opportunity, to having that space, and to the staff in the back there that helped us through this challenging season, because otherwise, parents like myself would have had to explore quitting and homeschool and online. And we don't want our kids to be staying at home during this time. So I will forever be grateful, and I strongly urge you to keep MLAP in its current location, because education shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mazzy Young. Welcome, Mazzy.
Hi.
Did I get that right?
Yes, you did, actually. Thank you. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. My name is Mazzy Young, and I graduated from BLC in 2020. I think a lot of people have the wrong idea of BLC in general, because when I went to school and throughout my adult life currently, I've heard people call it the bad kid's school. And that's not what it is at all. It's a school that's not... Sorry. It's a place for kids who don't have the support and security that you should have at home. I remember always feeling loved and cared for. I'm so nervous. I'm so sorry.
You're all right.
I remember always feeling loved and cared for from the time I went there in 2015 till when I graduated in 2020. And I can tell you that the whole building in general made me feel so wanted by everyone who was there. I never felt wanted at Forest View. I was actually asked to leave because I was too much. I just wanted to be very much heard and understood that the location of the building is what makes it BLC. It's what makes it a safe place for me and so many other kids who have gone and still attend. I hope someday my child will be able to attend MLAP/BLC, because I absolutely do not want him going to Forest View. Why would I want him going somewhere I wasn't wanted nine to 10 years ago? The location was always more workable, not only from my schedule as a young mom who had a child at 13, but also my mom, who I wish was still here so she can explain how much displacement to her also, who always helped me get to school. I couldn't imagine having anyone else by my side throughout those complicated and confusing years of my life, trying to figure out who I was. If it wasn't for the teachers, my mom, and the convenient location the school is in, I can tell you, I definitely wouldn't have finished school. If I never would have gotten the chance to leave Forest View, I wouldn't know the amazing people I know today. I appreciate everyone's time today to hear our pleas to keep BLC exactly where it is, so kids can keep going to a place they're wanted and loved and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mazzy. Up next, we have Danielle Addison, please. Welcome, Danielle.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm not here speaking only for my family tonight. I'm speaking for those that I've taken the time to listen to, something that some of you have failed to do. Since your survey went out, our community has been even more filled with confusion, frustration, and heartbreak. Parents, students, and staff are scared. We all see the direction things are heading, and we're not asking anymore. We are demanding for you to pay attention to us and our families, the stakeholders in this district. Surveys may make it easier for you to sort your data, but they don't capture the real voices of our families. They don't tell you about the students who cry at night because their favorite teachers were cut. They don't show you the parent who feels hopeless trying to fill out a form that can't possibly represent the needs of all their children. We know we're not the only district struggling. This proves it's not a poor management issue, but a national system stretched too thin. Families have already pulled their children because they no longer feel supported. Others are on the verge of doing the same. Parents are saying, "My child can't make it through another year like this." One mother asked me to share her story. Her daughter's IEP includes a study session, a lifeline that helps her succeed. If the high school periods are cut, she might still get that study time, but she'll lose other electives that give her joy, confidence, and the ability to graduate. She'll lose the balance she's fought so hard to find. MLAP parents and students here tonight, and other parents, say that their children are thriving, not just surviving during the day. That's because of the smaller environment and the sense of safety at the BLC building. Some of these students have faced trauma you may never see or understand, but for them walking into that building each day is the difference between hope and despair. If you take that away, you're taking away their safe space, their chance to believe in themselves again. And the electives, they're not just extras. They're lifelines. They show students who they are and who they can become. We're giving them the chance to dream before life forces them to choose out of fear or debt. We all understand the need to tighten our budgets. Other Minnesota communities had levies on the ballots this year, and over 62% passed. That's because communities know that when everybody gives a little, we all gain a lot. And let's not forget, during the July board meetings, some of you said you'd rather see this on the 2026 ballot. Now's your chance to prove you meant that. Put it on the ballot now. If your proposed cuts truly don't harm students and do fix the deficit, you can always vote later to remove it. But if you refuse, the message is clear. You don't care, and your goal is effectively to destroy this district. It's time to show the community that you do care and that you see the faces behind the numbers. Every cut takes a piece of our students' futures away. So look at them, listen to us, and choose to protect what makes the district worth fighting for. Last time I spoke, I said, "You need to do better," and you haven't even tried. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Next up, we have Amber Havajoki Han, please.
Hello.
Welcome.
Let me find my... I'm a little nervous, too. It's been a while.
You got this.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Amber Havajoki Han. I am currently a Behavioral Management Specialist at the high school. And up until last year, I taught yoga and breathwork for grades five through 12 at BLC. I'm here tonight because I've seen firsthand how deeply that school changes lives. You see, I am also a graduate of Brainerd. During my senior year, my dad, who happened to be the chairman of this very school board, passed away. That year, I didn't want to go to school. I skipped classes. I withdrew, and I barely got out of bed some days. I was lost. But I was given a second chance, a chance to graduate on time, because there was a school and a staff that believed in me when I didn't believe in myself. That second chance saved my life. That's what our alternative school is doing for every single student in that building today and in the past. These kids aren't here because it was the easier option. They're there because it's the right option for them, because the teachers and staff there meet them where they are, see them as individuals, and help them find their way forward. For many of those students, that school is not just a place to learn. It's a family. It's often the only place where they feel seen, supported, and believed in. I've watched those students grow, graduate, and become incredible human beings because someone didn't give up on them. Had someone given up on me 25 years ago, I wouldn't be standing here today with two degrees, a career I love, and a family I cherish. Please don't take away that second chance from the students who need it most. Keep this school, its staff, and the students where they are, in a space where they can continue to thrive, to heal, and to believe in themselves again. Kids first, always. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Up next, we have Jackie Janasek Foss, please. Welcome, Jackie.
Hi. Good evening. I'm reading this letter tonight on behalf of Clarice Rentschler. Clarice is the wife of the late Arlo Rentschler, who founded ISD 181 Area Education Center 55 years ago. "Good evening, members of the school board. I'm unable to attend the board meeting, but I want to highlight the exceptional work that is being done at the Brainerd Learning Center, AEC, and MLAP. I want to advocate for the continued support and investment in this vital program. The BLC serves students in many grades who benefit from a more personalized, flexible, and supportive learning environment. It's not just an alternative. It's a lifeline for many students who thrive outside the traditional classroom. Many hours of hard work went into getting this established. The district was sending a large group of students to the Learning Center in St. Cloud. Arlo recognized this for the district, and therefore, after many trips to the State Department of Education, the program was established in 1970. The BLC meets students where they are. The program offers small class sizes that foster meaningful relationships between students and staff. This close-knit atmosphere allows the individualized and one-on-one academic support, helping students build confidence and achieve success both in school and in life. The flexibility in pacing and scheduling is especially important for students balancing education and personal challenges and responsibilities. Beyond core academics, the BLC provides hands-on electives and innovative learning opportunities that spark curiosity and encourage exploration. Whether students are discovering new interests or deepening existing skills, they do so in a setting that values opportunity, innovation, and personal growth. If the district moves the location of the program, many will not attend. The reason being, they do not like formal classroom learning, and their experiences in other buildings have not been pleasant. So again, the district will be losing state aid for these students. I am not certain what a full-time equivalency student is worth, but I know it's quite a chunk of money. Please reconsider. As we look ahead, I urge the board to continue prioritizing for the BLC. This includes staffing, curriculum development, and most of all, their facility. That reflect the importance of the work being done there. The students served by BLC are not just completing credits. They are reclaiming their educational journey. Thank you for your time and your commitment to each and every student in our district."
Thank you, Jackie.
The BLC... Wow, she was over.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ed Shaw, please. Welcome, Ed.
Welcome. Evening, Madam Chair, Directors, Superintendent Grant. Ed Shaw, Brainerd, parent of two Forest View sixth graders. And certainly some previous comments, it's not one-size-fits-all. My kids love Forest View. It doesn't work for everybody. And it can be tempting to kind of make the cuts in the most marginal parts of society. The kids that they're not the quarterback of the football team, the homecoming queen or king, you know? Their parents usually aren't rich. It's easier to cut there. But that's not what we should do. That's not fair. That's not reasonable. It's not going to save us money. There's a state aid that somebody mentioned. And you drive the marginal out of education. Where do they end up? Well, they end up in my line of work, the court system, the jails. That's where they go. And it costs a lot more money to have them there, besides being rather inhumane. So this would be penny-wise and pound-foolish. But sticking back echoing in the comments of someone a couple people ago, we shouldn't be in this position. The Board of Crosby-Irton, they trusted their community. They said, "You can vote on a levy. You can decide whether to fund our schools to meet the budget needs or not." And the citizens decided to. They had the right to vote. Our people didn't. I mean, we, the people out there, we didn't get to vote. We didn't get to make a decision. So now, we're looking at cuts that are going to have a nasty impact, no matter where they fall. There's no easy answer at this point, but we shouldn't be in this position in the first place. We never should have got here. And it's not something unique to this district. Districts all over are facing budget challenges. And I've heard at other meetings, you know, blaming scapegoats, blaming trans people somehow. We're letting trans people in. That's a problem. Baloney, to be blunt. There are trans people all over the place. Picking on a scapegoat is not going to work. It didn't work for Hitler. It's not going to... It didn't work for Hitler, it's not going to work for us now. Give us a chance to vote, give us a chance to decide. Please, trust us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Up next, we have Doug Kern, please. Welcome, Doug.
Yep. You've got some hard decisions to make, but we forget how we got here. We had blue ribbon schools not too long ago. And we got Class A teachers, helpers, we got people that are really, really awesome here, but we forget how we got here. The last meeting that I was at, I was encouraged because I saw the Equity Committee was not on the agenda. Well, it became the Safe and Welcoming Schools Committee. You just changed the name. The community, they're looking for trust. They want to build trust. I know you guys had a meeting just before this where you talked about a survey that was put out. I didn't see what the outcome was on that. When I look at the enrollment report that we're going to look at here at the end of your meeting, we're going to get to see it, we're still losing students. And, you know, when you lose over 1,000 students, that's why we're in this boat we're in right now. Over the last couple of years, losing students like that, that cost the district. And the problem still hasn't been solved. And, you know, when you've got a two-year waiting list on all the other schools that are around the area, that's scary. It's scary because if I thought that just throwing money at the school would fix the problem, I would be all for it. Our teachers, you know, there's going to be some pain because of what's been going on. And, you know, I know you guys are dealing with past boards' decisions that they made. My heart goes out to you because you've got some tough decisions to make. And, you know, tightening the belt is not easy, it's not going to be fun, but it needs to happen until we quit hemorrhaging students. I just look at the dollar amount from the federal funding, even the Title IX thing. I don't know if that's still in the balance or if that's something that the school can actually look forward to, the $6 million that we're going to lose in federal funding from the Title IX, letting boys compete against the girls. I don't know if that's even been resolved or not an issue anymore. But anyway, I just thank you guys for your work. I know you've got some tough days ahead of you. And like I say, we've got Class A teachers here, but, you know, you've got some tough decisions to make as far as... The schools are awesome here. You know, my kids went through it. Wonderful schools. And we want to keep them that way, but, you know, you haven't corrected the problem yet. So now we have Safe and Welcoming Schools Committee. And that let me down. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Missy Kimmon, please.
Thank you for giving me time to speak tonight. My name is Missy Kimmon, and I recently heard that there is a chance that the BLC programs may be changing locations. As a mother who had all three of her children attend and successfully graduate from AEC, I really hope that doesn't happen. For most of the kids who I've known to be enrolled at AEC, they choose to go there because the learning environment they left was not a good fit for them. For many, it's because of anxiety from moving into a larger location. For many, it's because they get bullied at their school by their peers. And for many, it's because they just need a smaller setting. Whatever the reasons those students go there, they are seeking a place away from where they were not thriving. My children thrived in that school when they were failing at BHS in Forest View. I had tried all avenues before having my oldest enrolled at AEC when she was a junior in high school. The following year, my middle child was enrolled at the beginning of her sophomore year. When I had the opportunity to enroll my youngest, when he was in eighth grade, I took it. Being with the same teachers for several years made a huge difference for them. They built real relationships with their teachers. The teachers knew what motivated each student to be their best self every day. Those teachers helped my children not only learn academics, but to be accountable for their choices. They also celebrated their successes. They showed them how to be a part of not just their school, but also in their community. I could go on and on about all of the positive things that AEC has. Having had five years of my children going there, I never had very many negative experiences. If you've never attended an AEC graduation, you're definitely missing out. I believe, I've been lucky enough to watch all three of my children do that. Seeing a teacher speak of all the amazing things they helped your child experience and watch them grow through is so special. There is no way for that program to be as successful as it is if it is split up and moved to different locations. The staff there works so great as a team, and they need to be able to remain a team. The connections that the staff make with their students is something that those students would miss out on if this program changes. I know our district is facing some pretty serious problems. I also work for the district, so I do have a little more knowledge than many others may have. I, however, believe that changing this program as it is now will be more detrimental than many may think. Those students need a safe place to learn and feel heard and important. AEC offers that and so much more. Thank you again for allowing me time to speak.
Thank you, Missy. Up next, we have Ann Rohr. Welcome, Ann.
Good evening, school board. My name is Ann Rohr. I live in Breezy Point. I'm a senior and I attend school at the Alternate Education Center. I was in the Pequot School District for most of my education. I struggled, but kept my head above water enough to pass. Then, as many others, COVID had a detrimental impact on my education, and I became very behind. The Pequot School District did everything they could to help students catch up, and I tried all of it, from after-school tutoring sessions to personal pair help and even out-of-school tutoring. Unfortunately, they just weren't the resources that I needed. At the beginning of my 10th grade year, I transferred to the Brainerd High School with the goal of ending up at the 10th grade program at the AEC building. The difference in impact that the alternate program had was almost immediate. The smaller class sizes helped me be more comfortable and speak up in class discussions, and the casual atmosphere allowed me to form meaningful connections with my teachers and those who were trying to help me. And support from my staff and my environment allowed me to take my education more seriously after years of neglect. The biggest impact was being the focus or having a school for me. It was the first time I felt a place of belonging in my education, not a separate classroom to catch up, not a summer school, not after-school, not a library, not pushed to the side, but truly a school that was able to meet me where I was at and have the resources to help. The accessibility of the school largely impacts the students. It's one floor, so students with mobility issues can manage the building easier. For many of our students, mental health is a large concern. Having onsite mental health counselors to help these students will help them succeed in school. Then, there's the art room, the gym, the lab, and the shop. This building allows us, the rooms, to succeed. Not only will moving the program affect the Brainerd students who are already at the school, but it will also impact the students in surrounding school districts that do not have the resources to have an alternative program. If I would have not been able to come to the school, I likely wouldn't have been set to graduate this year. Honestly, the school has been life-changing, and I would hate to see my underclassmen not have the same opportunities, accessibility, and environment to learn as I did. I appreciate your time this evening, and I ask of you to look at other options. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next up, we have Laura Rathie.
Welcome, Laura. Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. I am... I live locally. I moved to the area and decided to live in Brainerd, honestly, because although I did not work here, the activities and classes in the high school that my daughter could take part in were different than in other places and impressive. When I was a child, the adults in my community stood up and supported education, supported teachers, supported activities, and a variety of things in schools. This was a very long time ago, clearly. But all of the adults in this room had that experience, most probably. And it's now our job to tell you that we need to support these young people. The... We understand a lot more today about how kids are educated. You've heard from a lot of people about the variety of things that work for people and heard people speak very... Much better than I can about it. If this means taking a vote, if this means increasing my taxes, that's my responsibility to make sure that the kids in this community have all the resources that they need to be educated safely and effectively. And my expectation of the school board is for you all to convince us of why this is and why we should be funding it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Laura. All right. And finally tonight, we have Twila Eric-Belton, please. Welcome, Twila.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. It's exciting to see my amazing students here and their amazing families, so thanks to them also. And thanks to the board. My name is Twila Eric-Belton, and I am proud to teach at the Brainerd Learning Center. The Brainerd Learning Center serves a variety of students with many different reasons for needing an alternative learning environment. An undertold story relates to students who attend BLC with an array of health issues and diagnoses. During my time at BLC, we have had some students attend who have been in treatment for cancer, some who have been diagnosed with multiple sclerosis, and some who've had conditions like rheumatoid arthritis. Those students would be challenged with walking long distance from parking spots, bus drop-offs, and up flights of stairs. We have had students diagnosed with Crohn's disease, with kidney disease, celiac disease, and irritable bowel syndrome, all of whom need to be able to find a private bathroom to maintain their health and their dignity. We have had students that have had ports implanted for medical treatments, where walking through a crowded hallway where they could be accidentally jostled would be daunting and dangerous. We have students with weakened immune systems who could be medically compromised by the exposure to hundreds of students in a day at a traditional school. We have had students who have come to us with diseases not normally diagnosed in the young, things like Hashimoto syndrome, postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome, and congenital heart defects, who are just trying to figure out how to live a life with these conditions. We also have had students that were living with diabetes, seizure disorders, lupus, polycystic ovary syndrome, chronic migraines, and many other disorders that need physical accommodations for their bad days. We also have students that know something's wrong with them, but they haven't figured it out yet. Our building was designed with all of these students in mind, from quiet spaces with lights that can dim, to access to private bathrooms, to a parking area that's big enough to accommodate many cars, and yet close enough to be just a quick walk into the building. The people who designed this, some of them who might be in this room, knew what they were building for. Our building is the only small building that can physically accommodate the needs of our middle and high school students who might be experiencing a new, emerging, or worsening health condition. We need options for those students who are experiencing a life-changing medical diagnosis and yet still would like to carve out some semblance of normality in their lives. I truly hope that none of you personally have children or grandchildren that need to attend the Brainerd Learning Center because of a medical condition, but we do need to be here for their worst days. Thank you.
Thank you, Twila. All right. That concludes public input for tonight. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to the approval of minutes, starting with our regular school board meeting from October 14. I'll look for a motion.
Motion.
I'll second. We've got a motion from Director Donnellinger, a second from Director Brecken. We will do a roll call vote for approval.
Stephanie Ederman?
Yes.
Randy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Morris?
Yes.
Michelle Brecken?
Yes.
DJ Donnellinger?
Yes.
Thank you, Kelly. We will look for approval of minutes for our special school board meeting on November 6.
She'll move.
I'll second. We've got a motion from Director Heidman, a second from Director Brecken. All those, never mind. We'll do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Abrekin?
Yes.
DJ Donnellinger?
Yep.
Stephanie Ederman?
Yes.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar, give you a chance to review that, and then I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All right. We've got a motion by Director Donnellinger, a second by Director Brecken. Any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Abrekin?
Yes.
DJ Donnellinger?
Yes.
Stephanie Ederman?
Yes.
Randy Heidman?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to presentations. First up tonight, we have Allison Van Vliet, speaking about the family liaison role in the district. And she did send out her presentation ahead of time, so we have a chance to look. Welcome, Allison.
Hello.
Thanks for joining us.
I was kind of voluntold. All right, so...
Ryan's going to do it for you.
Oh, he told me I was doing it.
Oh, you got it.
I got it. All right. So I don't want to go rogue, because I do that a lot, so I'm going to just read like other people are doing. All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Allison Van Vliet, family liaison for Brainerd Public Schools. Initially, when this position was developed, the goal was to have a liaison as a support and contact person for families who were new to the district or whose students were new to a building, including kindergartners, fifth graders, 12th graders. It was very quickly identified that the needs of our students' families were much greater than just that, and this role has since expanded to all parents and guardians who want extra support as long as their students are in kindergarten through 12th grade. Keep in mind, one person for all of them. Really quick, just to look at the stats. I'm just going to do facts because that's just important to know for the work that I do. So for Crow Wing County, it talks about that we have a higher percentage of households with incomes below $50,000 other than other counties in our state. I pulled this up on a Google search, you can do the same, but this represents our community. This is the data of our school as of last year and this year. We had 40.2% of our students qualifying as free or reduced, and 0.4% were identified as homeless. Currently, we have 52.4% of our students that are free or reduced, and 1.2% are homeless. As the district's family liaison, my role is to build bridges between families, schools, and the larger community. I understand that people stay where they feel wanted, where they feel heard, where they feel respected. Families don't choose a district just because of what it offers on paper. They choose it because of who we are and how we make them feel when they walk through our doors. The same can be said for employees who choose to work for a school district as well. As the family liaison, I hope to help match our words to our actions because we all want students to succeed. Our words need to have life behind them, for our families to have a sense of belonging at Brainerd Public Schools, a connection to the people, the relationships, and the care given. My goal is to build communities within our schools and a positive school community within our greater community. I'm doing this by connecting families to resources, providing support, encouraging parents and guardians, and building relationships. My work is about putting life into our words, helping families experience that connection, that sense of belonging, so that when they think about staying in Brainerd, it's not a data point or a dollar sign. It's because they feel at home here. So this is what I'm doing. This is 2025 so far at a glance. I'm available to families every day to help with anything a parent or guardian identifies as a need, with the idea that when households have support, students will feel less stress and can be focused on learning. I'm not replacing anything. I am just there for the parents. So since the start of the school year, I've developed a time for parents to come together for support and education monthly. I've attended various meetings for reentry attendance, 504, and IEPs. I've connected families with food resources. I've initiated an essential needs collection and a food drive for our district. I have referred 22 families for Thanksgiving resources, and I've collaborated with Bridges of Hope, The Shop, Meta5, CLC, Relationship Safety Alliance, Operation Community Connect, Lutheran Social Services, Crow Wing County Social Services, Salvation Army, various local churches, Thrive and Financial, Brainerd Public School Foundation, Lake City Restorative Justice Project, and more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison. We appreciate the work that you're doing.
Yeah. I love this job. Yeah.
Important work. Thank you.
You're very lucky to have Allison.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, up next on presentations, we have site continuous improvement goals. We've got several principals here on our list tonight, and we're gonna start with Martha Smithson. Welcome, Martha.
Hi. Board members, we're gonna ask the principals to present their reports to you, and then Christina and I will be at the end to be available for questions. So if you would be willing to keep track of your questions and provide them to us after all of them have gone, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for having me. Perfect. So we had three goals last year that we focused on. Honestly, we had probably five or six, but I'll share those three with you today. TS Gold, Teaching Strategies Gold, was our assessment that we used. It's the first year that we used it for all of our four-year-olds in VPK and for all of our four-year-olds in preschool. So it was a huge task to take, 65 domains and objectives that they authentically were looking at throughout those routines and activities. So starting at 72% to 75%, they racked it with 83.89% in that area of literacy, which was phenomenal. And then also in TS Gold, we were looking at gross motor skills, and we were surprised to see that it was 79% in 2024, and they went to 95%. And that was through our motor labs, working with physical and OTs, physical therapists and occupational therapists, and really focusing on what they could do in our gym and outside. Our teachers, our math teachers, gym teachers, literacy teachers, they teach everything to those children. So those were the two areas that we focused on through the TS Gold. And then we focused on developing the supportive and value-based work environment, and that was really focusing on the trauma-informed care. And so we had a reflective consultant that was paid for through a grant. They were able to come into our school to support all of our staff through some very specific trainings for how we understand ourselves, understand children, and understand families. And she was able to do some small group and individual work as well. So that was able, all that work from 2425 was where we were focusing on our goals for this year. So for this year with TS Gold, with all those 16 domains and just literacy, we decided to focus on the one area that was a little bit lower, and that was rhyme. So that was at 78% this year, and so we want to move up to 81. And man, if we got to 95, that would sure be incredible, but we're doing quite a bit of work during our in-services, PLCs, a lot of work with our families with that focused on rhyme. If you walk down the hallways, you're gonna hear our kids singing different rhyming songs. And if you know a few yourself, let us know. Then our another goal, a continued goal from that trauma-informed care, was the pyramid model, and that's doing some problem solving and some strategies on how to cope with disappointment, how to handle frustration, what they can put in their toolbox. There's a lot of social-emotional skills that we're working on with our kids, our families, and different adults, too. So that is a huge piece that they're working on this year, to have fidelity with that. So there's different checklists that we work on. MinCo used to have this, but we're using those different tools. It's a national program as well. So the fidelity of that, we're assessing every month. And then our data dig is the STAR program, and that's the teaching for students with autism. And so some of those direct teaching, pivotal response, a lot of very focused work for children that have either autism or some special needs, so what that fidelity could look like. So all three of these goals really encompass a big part of our early childhood, but birth to three is working very closely on some home visiting guidelines and how they can work on best practices for birth to three. And then our speech paths are working very closely with the Pyramid and STAR. And our ECFE is working very hard on how they can support families. So a ton of great work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Principal Smithson. Welcome again, Principal Raski.
I do follow back. Well, we do that, too, because we get to have early childhood, so let's put that on the plate. So Molly Raski, I'm the principal at Nissvoll Elementary for preschool through 5th grade. And our goal, go forward. So last year, we really focused on growth, because every student can grow. We wanna make sure that our students are making predicted or high growth, and so we are measuring that. If our students aren't all growing, then we wanna make sure that we are differentiated in the way that they need. If a student isn't growing, we can meet all the needs of all of our students then. No student is left behind. Because when we look at proficiency, we are looking at just one number, and we need to make sure that all of our students are making high growth. Because if they're not making high growth or predicted growth, they're all at risk. So last year, we, two years ago, we had the growth predicted and high of 63%. And so we wanted, over two years, to gain that by 20%. Last year, we had a huge year. We changed a lot of things, and the most important thing that we changed was we were using all of our data. We have another goal around FastBridge. We're using that to really measure, to look at the benchmarks, to make sure that everyone is growing throughout the year and not just at the end. So we're progress monitoring, making sure that we are meeting those benchmarks, and if we're not, we adjust things. So we had two goals. We met our, or our on-track goal, so we were at 63%, we're at 70, so we met that benchmark. This next year, we're looking at 80% of our students making predicted or high growth. And so we're working really hard at that. Staff, they're talented, they're amazing. They're digging in with FastBridge, with Proliftic, and we are looking at every student. We meet every six weeks with MTSS. So we're looking at every single aspect of their day to make sure that we are meeting their needs. If they're not making predicted growth, we look at that individual student and what we're doing for them, and we adjust. I like this, mood lighting. That feels right. Thank you. All right, let's dig in. So we are on track, and we're really excited about that. So we're going to continue that. Our next goal is around Sabers, My Sabers, the risk assessments. And our students, we wanted to make sure that 10% of our students move through the tiers. There is low risk, some risk, and high risk within Sabers and My Sabers. There's always risk, which seems scary, and it is. So we did have 10% of our students move, and we still had one student at high risk. But we had a lot of safeguards. That means all year. We make sure that those students have what they need, and they can move between those things throughout the year, depending on what's going on for them. But we met that goal. We're meeting the needs of our students in many different ways. Regardless of how many students are in our room, we see each of them. And that is the way that we meet those goals. We see them, we meet their needs, they're seen, and they feel safe. So we met that goal. That's an important one, because they really can't access the academics if everything else isn't met. We also, through all of this, oh, sorry. We also met our goal around data digs. We won't be able to meet these other goals or be on track unless we had assessments to monitor. So our staff, and really, they've taught me a lot. Their forward-thinking, I've learned a lot from the people right here in this room that came to celebrate this and their work tonight. They have progress monitored using FastBridge and our Ola, CoreOla, assessments and progress monitoring, and our screeners. So they've really dug into all the different aspects so that we can understand where our learners are, because if we don't know where our learners are, we really can't take them to the next step. And there's multiple tools in there, depending on what that student is being held back by, such as MACE. If a student is being held back by comprehension, we need to do a different assessment to evaluate that and possibly adjust. But we're monitoring to see if they are making progress. If they're not, we need to adjust our instruction, which the talented people behind me, they can do that. I can support them with the assessments and all of those other aspects, but they're adjusting to the assessments all day. And these are kids, not assessments or scores. We need to keep that in mind. We also are digging into Proliftic, which is really exciting, and so that's going into this year. And I'm talking too long, and I know it. It really hasn't, you haven't pushed me or anything. So we've met that goal, they've met that goal. I didn't, I got out of their way. So goal met, goal met, and we're still working on, and we'll always be working on growth. Our students will always be growing, we'll always be growing with them. This next year, as I said, sorry, you're so good, thank you. So this next year, like I said, we are on track, so 70% of our students are making predicted or high growth based on the composite score in FastBridge, and that's kindergarten through 5th grade. I really like that we can assess students in one assessment and be able to look at the whole school and whether or not we're moving forward, looking at screeners, progress monitoring, all of that. So this next year, our goal is 80% of our students will make predicted or high growth. Regardless of how they came in, they will make that growth. Students that came in and were struggling in a certain area, they should make a year and a half. And our teachers are really working hard to make sure that we support them in the way they need. Our data dig, like I really got excited about Proliftic too early. Yep, great. So we also have Proliftic, which I'm so excited about, because we, so it is a data warehouse, but also it looks at FastBridge and MCAs, it can triangulate our data, and I get to look at demographics. So we get to see our students and how they come in, and what barriers they may have, and if there's any trends. So now we're digging into that. So we see the whole child, as well as the entire school. Is there a trend we need to be looking at? So that's our work for this year, and the work around our data, that serves everything else. So we're moving forward in the same way. Our PLC is in line, our staff meetings are in line, our CIP days are in line, our continuous improvement, everything is in line. So the ship's going in the same direction. I'm excited, and these people are doing the work. So I just get to articulate it very poorly, and so, come on out. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Principal Raski. All right, and.
I know. Wow.
And up next, we have Taylor Demuth, Principal Demuth from Baxter Elementary. Welcome.
Thank you. Right, good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Taylor Demuth, and I'm the principal at Baxter Elementary. As someone who has spent the majority of my career working for the Brainerd Public Schools, it is truly an honor to be back, working with and serving the amazing staff, students, and families who are truly the heart and soul of this district. So we're gonna take some time to look at reviewing our 2425 goals, and then move into our 2526 goals. But I think it's really important to note, each and every single day, the incredibly hardworking and dedicated staff within each of our buildings who are continually showing up for our kids, reflecting and refining their practice to give them the best. Looking at our 2425 goals, so our first goal was around our state accountability test in reading. We did not meet that goal. And when I think about that, there are numerous factors that impact that data. So again, that is one test on one day. We're also in the middle of shifting and refining our literacy practices as a district. So anytime that you make shifts of that magnitude, you are going to see change. You are going to see implementation dips, you are going to see some of those things. I also think it's really important to note, over the past years, we have reduced staffing, support staff within our classrooms. That directly impacts what we can do. Again, I think class sizes plays another role in this as well. So when I think about our building literacy, our building leadership team, we talked a lot about literacy being one of those foundational skills that we are going to continue to target, because we know our students need to be able to read, they need to be able to write now and into the future. So again, that, you will see that remaining one of our areas of focus as we move into the 2526 goals. Our second goal was around our Sabers assessment, and so again, that's that social, academic, and emotional behavior risk screener. That is really important to look at. Because it helps us to identify those students that some are outwardly displaying those behaviors, some are more internal. So it helps us to slow down as a staff and determine what students might need a little extra support, because we know when they're struggling behaviorally, it is really hard to meet their needs academically. So again, we had 76% of our students in that low-risk category, and the goal was to shift to 80% by the end of the year. The numbers kind of waxed and waned throughout the year, so we are going to, since we didn't see that consistent trend upward, we're gonna remain focused on this goal, just because we know our students need those skills. And if they're coming to us needing additional support, we need to be able to identify what specific skills are they missing, or might they need a little bit of extra support and taking on so that they can navigate those social situations, so that they can develop the appropriate coping skills and those behavioral skills to be successful in the classroom. And then finally, our last goal was around family engagement. We had set a goal of 80% of our Baxter families attending those in-person family engagement nights, and we were successful. Open house, we had 91% attendance, which is great. We had conferences 95.8%, and then our keep-in-touch nights with 80%. So we decided, as a leadership team, when we sat down this fall and really decided, what do we need to focus on? Family engagement and involvement is still very, very important to us. We just decided we don't need a specific goal set around it at this time, but just plan to continue building those strong relationships with our families and PTO, as they are very actively engaged as partners in each of our students' educational journey. So that brings us to our goals for this year. So we kind of grouped, our leadership team really wanted to focus in on literacy. Again, we talked about that reading state accountability test. We are going to keep that as one of our goals, because I think it's important to note that, again, yes, that's one test on one given day, but that's that cumulative learning that occurs over their K4 experience, right? And so when you think about that, we also wanted to add a component of how are we going to monitor that growth throughout the course of the year? So we talk about FastBridge assessment. We give that through fall, winter, and spring. We have three testing windows. And so we decided, as a team collectively, we are going to take that, whatever each grade level is starting at for their percentage at or above expectations, and we wanna grow it by 5% per grade level, per testing window. So accounting for 10% growth per grade through the course of the year. And I think just keeping that as our focus, when we go into our team meetings and we look at our data, we're having a lot of conversations around our kids that are moving, that are shifting, that are growing, and those that are not, and why aren't they growing, and what other supports do we need to add. So I think when you look at those action steps, implementing our district's structured literacy work, that's ongoing work, it started last year, it's continuing this year. Each of our professional learning sessions, we are getting a little bit better each time. We're setting benchmarking goals. We're using that screening to intervention report within FastBridge to go, okay, what is that child successful at, and what is their next skill that they need to take on? And then as a team, really determining what interventions do we need to put in place, both in that general ed setting, in our intervention spaces, and within special education. And I think when I look at our team, we're coming together, we're using, we have a reading interventionist, we have one, where she, her schedule is as full as it possibly can be, and it's constantly evolving based upon how our kids are doing. We talk about, if they're growing, we're getting them out of intervention and getting the next child in, as well as all of our teachers are working to implement those strategies that we're learning through those collective district-wide literacy shifts. These conversations are happening daily, weekly. Weekly at our PLCs, we talked about team meetings happening three times a year, our professional learning days as well. And I just think it is a big lift right now, and I can't speak highly enough about the staff. Both our teachers, our support staff, we're all working together to go, okay, where are students at, and where, what do we need to add to help them to continue? where are students at and where, what do we need to add to help them to continue to grow? And, so again, that other goal that I referenced, we are going to keep the Sabers Assessment goal of increasing. We started the year with 78% of our students in that low-risk category. We hope to increase it to 82% by the end of the year. And we just felt that remaining focused on being proactive in identifying and supporting our students who require that additional behavioral support is incredibly, incredibly important because we are seeing a greater behavioral need across all grade levels, across all settings. So our leadership team is, at a building level, is continuing, continuing to discuss how are we going to best proactively teach those skills? Because we know, just like reading, writing, math, if they don't have those behavioral skills or strategies in place, we have to explicitly teach them so that they can take on the academic learning as well. So those are kind of our action steps. We have daily morning meetings. We're doing monthly character traits as well, where we talk about what it looks like to be a respectful citizen, what it looks like to have a compassionate heart, giving examples of that infused into our, the work of our SSI teacher, Student Support Interventionist, who meets with each classroom and talks through those topics, as well as meeting with small groups of students based upon individual needs. The other piece is just looking at how are we as a school, community, helping all of our students to develop those skills that we, they need to not only be successful in the classroom, but in the real world as well? So I want to just thank you for your time and support as we work towards those goals, all of these goals together as a team. I welcome you to come in and visit our school. We would love to have you see the amazing work that our educators are doing every day. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to go find it. What the hell? I'm going to take a two-minute break. Do you want to keep on going? I'm going to go find it.
Okay.
No, it's annoying.
Thank you.
It's the heater.
Oh, Randy.
The heater, Randy.
Randy, it's the heater.
It's the register in the hall.
Welcome, Dr. Stomach.
Welcome, thanks for having me here.
Thanks for joining us.
Am I waiting? So I'm Tammy Stomach, and I'm principal over at Forestview Middle School. I'm back at middle school as principal, and it's my first year back over at Forestview, which is my 37th year in public education. And 26 of those years are in middle school. So it's exciting to be back in middle school. And my roots in this district go back to being a, a piece of helping design that building way back in the day when it first opened, and we moved over in the winter of 2004. And I want to say before I start with the goals that I do think Forestview was an amazing place. And I think it's a place that can be misunderstood and misrepresented often in light. And I just want to say that we have, take a moment to acknowledge that we've got an amazing staff. We're doing amazing things over there. And middle school kids are amazing people. They're often misunderstood as well. And so we are having a good year, and my staff is absolutely amazing. So you'll see on the screen before you there, we have four goals from last year. And we were on track or met on all of those goals. So that's very exciting news and things to celebrate. We were looking at the percentage of our students, meeting their reading growth goal as measured by FastBridge. And last year, we were aiming to have that go from 60% from the year before to 63% by the end of the school year last year. And we not only met, but we exceeded that with a spring growth goal coming in at 66%. The second one is that we were looking at improving and promoting our school-wide literacy. And we were providing ongoing professional development for all staff, supporting and contributing to the efforts at our sites. And then we have a Forestview literacy poster that we have asked all staff to have at present and in their classrooms so that that can spill over outside of just that one core content area, but it can be visible and a focus in all of our other areas. So for example, on the poster, students and staff are able to see and represent things like comparing and contrasting. It's not only germane to the subject of literacy, summarizing, analyzing, demonstrating, and showing evidence. So that was one of our efforts around that realm, and we're on track for that goal at the end of the school year last year. We were looking to improve our social-emotional learning and programming for the 24-25 school year, and also looking to have a plan in place for SEL programming for the following years. You'll see that our summary there is that we, most grades demonstrated growth, particularly in emotional regulation. Seventh and eighth grades had the most complete data on the survey and the data we were gathering. And fifth and sixth grade showed promising improvement in that area. Across all grades, students made more progress in emotional control than as self-assessed by putting themselves in, "I'm generally in a bad mood." They talked about themselves being able to have more emotional control. So that's a good thing, on track for that goal. And then we wanted to improve the middle school experience for staff and students. Engaging in efforts to assess student and staff climate was a focus for last year, and discussing that climate and taking efforts to improve student and staff climate. So there was a pre and a post-test with some survey information from last year and new principal coming on. I also gave a staff survey in June before I came on site and looked at that data. And we've been doing some focusing on where that data was at and things that we can do. And so I'm happy to report that we were on track for that goal as well at the end of the school year last year. Then for the goals that we landed on for this year, we decided to focus very basic in our focus on literacy and math. Two areas that we could focus on with lots of changes to the site over at Forestview, and we wanted to hone in on these two specific areas. So for literacy, we want the percent of our students at Forestview meeting their reading growth goal, measured again by the FastBridge Assessment that all sites are using, to increase from spring of last year from that 66% to 68% this spring. And then we're also going to look at, when available, and it is now, our fall data. So where did they come in at the fall? And we want to also have that 2% increase from fall of this year to spring. Our math goal, again, is on the FastBridge goal, and we ended spring last year with that rounded up to 64, but 63.87%, and we were aiming for a 2% increase in our math as well. And then again, we're looking at our fall to spring. So we're looking at spring to spring as well as fall to spring for that area. Components that we are implementing and focusing on with our goals, center on core instruction, implementing our core instruction with fidelity and intervention, are using our Time to Thrive time, using multi-tiered systems of support. Again, I referenced already the literacy poster. We're taking the FastBridge Assessment in math and reading three times a year. Our MTSS team has already reviewed our fall MTSS data. So it's a big lift at a site such as the size of Forestview. We looked at over 1,600 students worth of data. We had one day scheduled, and that was too much to ask to get done in one day. We had a second day. But we reviewed the individual data from all of those students to see where they're at and what their needs are. And then we're able to place them accordingly in that extra chunk of time that we have. So we've done a lot of work, and we still are, it's ongoing always, the work that we're doing. But I'm proud of where our staff is at, and I'm proud of the strides that we are making as a site. So I hope you are as well. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Dr. Stomach. All right. And next up, we have the fall FastBridge screening data with Director Lundgren. Welcome, Director Lundgren.
Okay, well, I am here to share the fall screening data report for our FastBridge screening. So this is a two-page document. On the first page, our first section, this is showing the district overview of our three assessments. So starting at the left, this is our reading assessment. So at the top, that information provides the number, percentage of students that completed the reading assessment for fall. And at the bottom, that is the overall reading proficiency for that fall screening window. So that was at 62%. Proficiency, again, that's looking at how many students or percentage of students that are on track to meet that end-of-year learning outcome. In the middle, we have the math assessment. So again, at the top, 89% of our students completed the math assessment. At the bottom, our math proficiency was also 62%. And then at the far right, this is our Sabers Assessment. 86% of our students completed the Sabers Assessment, and our proficiency in the fall was 78%. So again, that's the broad overview. In the middle, the next graph that we have, this is looking again at grade level proficiency data for the two assessments of math and reading. So we have the, on the Y-axis, that's the percent proficient. On the X-axis, that's the grade level. The blue bar represents the math proficiency. The orange bar represents the reading proficiency. So that's just the fall screening data, grades K through 11. And then last year, at the winter and spring, we shared the student growth data. This is just a note that that growth data looks at the growth between two data points. So when we come back with the winter screening data, that information will be added to the On the second page, let me. So this is the start of the trend data by cohort. So looking at our graphs, we have them broken down by the elementary cohorts, middle school, and then high school. On the Y-axis, that's the percent proficient. Oops, we had to restart it. All right. Canvas said we're done. Okay. So we have the percent proficient on the Y-axis, and then the screening date on the X-axis. So the way this is labeled, F24, that stands for Fall '24, W, Winter '25, so on and so forth. So the third, first three data points on the graph, those are the three data points from last year's screening, Fall, Winter, Spring. And then the fourth data point is the data point for the fall screening this, this fall. And this is by cohort. So for example, this purple line at the top, that is following students that are graduating in the year 2034, which is our fourth grade cohort this year. So the three data points from last year, that would have been from their third grade screening. And then this fourth data point is now that cohort's fall screening data point. So we have reading and math for those students in grades K through 4. Moving into the middle, same type of setup. This is for middle school students, so students in grades 5 through 8. Again, the first three data points would be their scores proficiency from last year, and then this fourth data point is fall, this fall. So then, reading and math. And then the, the bottom row, this is our high school cohort. We only included grades 9 through 11, our senior students. Some of them are not taking the test in the fall because their English 12 course, it's a one semester course, and then they take an elective one of the other semesters. So depending on how their schedule is organized, they may not be in an English class in the fall. And then same with math. So depending on what math class they take, they might not have a math class in the fall. So we only included grades 9 through 11. Thank you.
All right, any questions from the group?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Ward.
Well, I'm Christina, and thank you, and thank you, the elementary principals, for really ama, I think really amazing results. Thank you for, for that report. I do want to, I do want to ask about literacy. I know that we're going to more phonics-based program, but my understanding is we're kind of putting it in, in, implementing it in parts. And then at the, and then in spring, we're going to be pulling, putting it fully. It's my understanding, and I want to make sure I'm, I'm correct on that. But why aren't we, why aren't we fully implementing it now? The literacy program that we're going to eventually be going to, which is highlighting phonics?
Director Ward and members of the board, we do not have a new adopted curriculum, if that's, if that's what you're asking. Right now, this year, we are doing a thoughtful and intentional implementation of what we learned last year in our structured literacy professional development. So we are doing stage-by-stage implementation for every grade level and every area in more of a foundational structured literacy environment. Phonics is definitely highlighted in a structured literacy environment, but we're using this year to support teachers with understanding those evidence-based practices and trying those evidence-based practices in their settings in all elementary levels, and understanding the difference between what phonics instruction looks like in kindergarten versus fourth grade. So it is a more pronounced component of our literacy instruction this year, but it's not the only thing we're working on. We're working on all aspects of structured literacy.
So is the literacy plan consistent throughout the elementary, throughout the, all the elementary schools in the district?
As consistent as we can be at this stage of implementation. Our CCC leaders and our PLC leaders have been instrumental in helping support their colleagues on our professional in-service days. And Dr. Melissa Cornea, who is our literacy specialist on staff, has also helped work with our teacher leaders to develop those trainings, in part, building lesson plans and building structures in place. So teachers don't only go back to their classroom knowing that these are essential components of phonics instruction, for example, but also understanding what that looks like day after day after day of instruction. This whole week, we started with in-service day on Monday, and we had a literacy coach working with teachers in every elementary classroom, sharing the same plan, doing demonstration lessons, and trying to develop that consistency and common language so that all of our grade level teachers can work together cohesively when we are together on those in-service
Okay, thank you.
So to follow up with John's question, we don't, we really don't have a, a curriculum right now.
We absolutely have a curriculum. We don't have a new adopted curriculum since last year.
Okay, 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 okay. Let me ask this question. I'm not, obviously, an expert, but do we, do we use a sounds-first approach? Or do we use a letter names approach when we start talking about the alphabet and, with these kids? And you're looking at me like, ooh, where'd you get this from? I do my own search.
I know exactly where you got that.
Came from Steubenville.
I meant, yes. We use a multimodal approach. So we do sounds, letters, listening, speaking, and writing, all interest, all at the same time. So if a student is loo, is using, learning a letter name, they're also learning the letter sound, how to form the letter, and where, what the letter contributes to making words, making, and making meaning from text.
Yeah, because, again, the little reading that I've done, it's kind of interesting. We all know the ABC song.
Not all it's cracked up to be.
Well, you're right, because why don't we have a sounds-first song? Where the kids actually know what, you know, like, you know? That's what I'm saying. I mean, there's, there's, there's an argument on, on both sides of the story, but they need both. I was just... I was just curious if we use one of those approaches or if we use both of them. That's all.
We use a multimodal approach. And there is a song for you, Dr. Heidman. It's called the Other Alphabet Song.
Oh, okay, cool. I'll look.
Can you sing it for us?
Definitely better than Baby Shark.
My grandson would take a... One other question. How are we going to, with a lot of the goals and a lot of the things that were talked about tonight, which were really good stuff, we're using growth? How are we ever going to compare ourselves to our neighboring school districts if we are focused on growth?
Yeah, because we use the national norms for that growth. So we are comparing ourselves to eight million other students, not just ourselves. When we hit those growth targets, those are based on eight thousand other, or eight million other students that take the same, as I was going across the nation.
That was never explained. I mean, that was...
Yep, pretty comprehensive data points, pretty intentional and pretty realistic psychometrically, so that we have confidence in what those growth targets should be. You heard one of our principals talk about accelerated growth and predicted growth. So predicted growth is like average growth, but if we know that students are not yet where their grade-level peers are, then we have to use those accelerated growth targets. So we don't measure just growth, even though you heard a lot about that in the goals. We also measure proficiency, which Christina talked about. Those are the measures of how our students are on track to meeting those grade-level expectations at the end of every grade level, from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. And Fastbridge, right now, is the only measure we have that does that. So it's an important part of our comprehensive assessment plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you. Great information tonight. All right, up next, we'll move into new business. We've got a few items here for action. The first one on the agenda, I'm going to let Superintendent Grant speak to a little bit. I think it was an omission.
I'll make a motion. You could tell us, but what are we going to do?
The name was missed.
Got it.
All right. Thank you, Director Donderlinger. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Director Donderlinger, a second by Director Brecken. I'm assuming there's no discussion. We'll do a roll call vote, or, yeah, roll call vote, please.
John Ward.
Yes.
Phil Brecken?
Yes.
EJ Donderlinger?
Yes.
Stephanie Ederman?
Yes.
Randy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes. Thanks, Kelly. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the first reading of policy four forty, the Employee Social Media Use Policy. And we previewed this last week. We looked at it at a work session.
Yeah, this is the first.
So this is the first of three readings.
Yep. Good point. We have looked at it.
Hello. So Jason is gone today, so you're stuck with me.
Thank you, Carla.
I made the changes that were requested. And then also, everything is underlined in red that I changed. I also tried to clarify a little bit. It was, people were confused about, does this mean I can't share, when talking about not posting on your personal page your students, like, in your classroom or whatever? People were confusing that with, oh, that means I can't, I also can't share, like, the boy or football team's photos because there's students in it. So I was trying to clarify that under C, where it says employees may not post images of coworkers or any, any personal social media network without the coworker's consent. And then it says, except for general images that may be taken in public arenas, such as the sporting events or fine arts performances, et cetera. And then I added, or sharing posts from another page. I'm hoping that will clarify that for everyone. Meaning, you don't have to worry about that. We're talking about your personal page and sharing something, you know, from in the classroom or in the school.
So if you're sharing, like, Brainerd Public Schools' post?
Yeah. Go, go for it. You can share whatever you want.
And in fact, we should be doing that.
We should be doing that. And that was the concern, one of the concerns too, was, well, then we can't promote our schools. And it's like, we want you to promote your schools, so it doesn't, we're not trying to limit what people are doing on their personal pages, except for when they're using student photos in their classroom without permission from parents. You need to have that permission in order to do that. As a district, anyone who runs a district site, because we have twelve, twelve school sites that are all run by different people, we have backups, like, I can get into each page. They're allowed to do that because they're the administrator of that page. So I think there was a little bit of confusion there, too. So... I don't know if we cleared it up or not.
I, I thank you, Dad. Thanks for making those changes, yeah.
That makes sense. Any...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Ward.
Carla, thank you for addressing some of the concerns we had at the workshop about this. The other thing that we had talked about at the workshop was, is it all legal beagle? Do we know that our attorney is...
Oh, sorry. Jason sent it to the lawyer, but I haven't heard if he's heard back yet. But I do know, after I made the changes, he forwarded it to the lawyer, he said.
Thank you.
Great.
So we can still make a motion to approve this first reading, and if the attorney recommends changes, then we can make that on the second, okay?
Or a third.
So I make a motion, we approve the first reading.
All right, we've got a motion from Director Brecken, a second from Director Ederman. Any further discussion?
Even if we do the third reading, we can always come back to it if something changes down the road.
That is correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Phil Brecken?
Yes.
EJ Donderlinger?
Yes.
Stephanie Ederman?
Yes.
Andy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
All right, and the number three for the business, new business for action tonight, was something that we moved to the agenda after our work session earlier today. It was a conversation we had about the Agit Program and pausing testing for kindergarteners this year, because that testing is coming up here in December, so that we can study the design of the program and implement whatever changes come for next year. And so that was a condition of being able to do that. So that is the agenda item on the table for our action.
So I'm confused. So in order for us to study the Agit Program with Dr. Scott J. Peters, we have to suspend the program for next year for first grade? I didn't, I took it that way. I thought we kind of, I didn't understand why we were doing that in the first place.
Well...
I know we're saving seventy thousand dollars, is what I was told. That's what I remember hearing in the work session. Tell me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right. If we do not test right now for the kindergarteners in our inner school, there won't be kids available in first grade because they haven't, we haven't been able to evaluate their skills.
Right.
And that would be for just the next year.
So that, that really doesn't have anything to do with digging into the rest of the program?
No, nothing.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I mean, I didn't know if you got it that way, or you took it, I took it the other way. I don't think one has anything to do with the other.
Program will continue, but we will be studying the appropriate measurement.
Yeah.
But the program won't continue in first grade.
Correct. We're voting to get rid of it for next year for first grade.
Well, we haven't reviewed it, yeah. We haven't reviewed it since two thousand and seventeen.
And I think John had made a comment during the workshop, too, that, on your research, John, you said, generally speaking, it's not a good idea to test until at least second or third grade?
That's what the research shows.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
That I've looked at.
Right, okay. So...
Yeah, I mean, it was a good discussion. The administration brought some ideas that we haven't really visited this program and the design of it in several years, and we reserve the right to get smarter, and we should get smarter as we're able to, so.
And just to clarify, we're not getting rid of the Agit Program.
No, no.
Just want to make sure everyone understands that. We're not getting rid of it.
Agit is a gem.
Yes, it is.
Pun intended.
Better put that in bold.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion that relates to this topic.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Director Ederman and a second by Director Heidman to pause testing for kindergarteners for the Agit Program this year only. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
EJ Donderlinger?
No.
Stephanie Ederman?
Yes.
Randy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Phil Brecken?
Yes. Thank you, Kelly. And I know there's hesitation as we talk through some of these issues, and these are going to be very difficult and hopeful that we come out the other side of this with good ideas and good design and smart thinking that we can put to work for our students. So it is not without thought. All right, we're going to move into informational. We've got several folks on the agenda that have attended committee meetings and are, have some information to report out. We'll start with Brainerd Public Schools Foundation. Director Ederman, anything you'd like to bring forward?
Yes, so the Brainerd Public School Foundation will be hosting its fourth annual Bingo Night in partnership with the Brainerd American Legion on December eighth. And tickets are available on the, on the website. And BPSF has been growing like crazy and now holds about four-point-eight million dollars in assets between scholarship funds, foray grants, and donor-advised funds. The BBSF Board held a strategic planning session last week identifying three key objects to help continue to move the organization forward and manage its incredible growth. The bigger event, which is premier, which is their premier fundraising event, will be held on Saturday, February twenty-first, at Grandview Lodge. This theme is Olympics, stronger together. We are seeking sponsors, auction items, and ticket sales will be on sale soon. Visit pbsf.org for more details. And bingo is really fun, so don't forget to get your tickets for December eighth.
Thanks, and it sells out really fast, so...
It does.
Yes, get on it. Thank you, Director Ederman. Up next, we've got the Wellness Task Force. Director Brecken?
Okay, so we met and a survey was created to be given to building principals regarding what they see as wellness needs within their buildings. That survey, from what I'm hearing, was completed, and at our next meeting, we will be reviewing that data. We certainly appreciate the building administrators for taking the time to fill that out. Our team will also, yes, it makes some decisions about how best to proceed with the data that we're getting. We also discussed ways to have small wins. We're looking at possibly doing Welcome Wednesdays at Forest View in the morning to just welcome the kids that are coming to school, and then looking at doing some wellness tips for the parent newsletter on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
You're up again.
Yes.
And I'm up again, except I did not, I was not able to attend the Safe and Welcoming Schools Committee, so I'm not sure what they're doing.
Oh, that's a good report.
I promised to have more next month.
Michelle, is this the Wellness Task Force, is that the committee that, where we were trying to protect students? I mean, if I remember correctly, there was the Equity Task Force, there were students involved, and it was kind of a closed...
No.
So the Wellness Task Force is open?
Yes, it's open.
Why can't we include that in our workshop stuff?
Include what?
Your meet, or are these people from the community, when do you have your meetings, or when do you do your...
So our meetings, we just changed them. I think they're the second Tuesdays of the month at eight-thirty. They go for about an hour and a half to two hours.
Oh, okay, so that's...
We are, we're a very new committee. We, and we're just trying to address mental health, how do, how we can support mental health and staff, students, and hopefully, eventually, the community through Brainerd Public Schools.
So you think it's better just to keep it as a separate entity and not evolve it into the, our work group sessions? With the other committee stuff?
We have six core committees. Okay, then we have, like, I go to the community ed ones.
Yeah.
And then I'm on the one for the health benefits. So those aren't really the committees like we used to be, chairing and stuff like that.
So they would not be, would not be wise to keep them totally separate.
Well, we have community people that are a part of this.
DAC.
Gotcha, just...
Similar to that.
Similar to DAC, yeah.
That's, that's a really good point, though, and we should clarify that, that we do have six committees that the board leads, and they're board committees. These report outs are on committees that we are, as board members, we're liaisons to those groups to bring back information. They are not committees of this board. But that's a great question, Director Heidman.
Does that make sense?
Kind of like DAC, like the DAC committee, that's, that's at night, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, same deal, gotcha, gotcha.
I mean, it's not that you couldn't attend if you wanted to, but, yeah.
All right, and then the last one we had was the Paul Bunyan Education Cooperative Committee Meeting Update. Director Ward?
So on December, or, excuse me, November sixth, Paul Bunyan Education Cooperative Board of Delegate Meeting happened, and it was very well-attended. And it was very interesting and informational. As everybody knows, or all of the board members know, that, you know, the, to look at that agreement, the joint powers agreement with them, which started in two thousand and twelve and was revised in two thousand and sixteen, you know, if we got out of that agreement, it would save us, let me just, about two hundred and... mutually dissolved PBC agreement would be about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So there was a lot of discussion about that, and, and, but there was a lot of great information. I sent all board members, I think there was forty slides of information on Paul Bunyan Ed Co-op. You know, they're, they serve six school districts and two, six school districts and two charter schools. They, they provide support with federal regulations and professional development. There's eleven school psychologists that evaluate students and also offer trauma event help and support. The, they, they have a third party, all of, all these services. And they have a number of staff that serve, you know, everything from deaf students to hearing student, to hearing problems, to deaf and hearing problems, to interpreters, many, many different services that are offered through the co-op to individual districts, including ours. We're the fiscal host for them. And so there is going to be a, they're in place right now, and it has started a fiscal analysis of what if the Brainerd School District pulls out of the Paul Bunyan Co-op, what would that mean to the individual school districts, and what would it mean to Brainerd? So in other words, if the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that, that Marcy has given us as a potential savings, we would then probably need to hire all those individual personnel that are now kind of shared district-wide. So it was very, very informational and lots of good questions asked. And the fiscal analysis will be done in early two thousand and twenty-six. And I, I hope all of you got, I don't even know if, if my colleagues, my board colleagues were able to open the slides that I sent you, but that's loaded with lots of information about the Paul Bunyan Co-op.
You better check your sent file, John.
We would love to see those, so thank you. If you want to resend it, that'd be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will resend it.
Thanks, appreciate that. Thanks for the update. Thanks for the update. Um, let's see, Business Services Report, Director Lord, please.
Good evening, in your packet is the enrollment report. Um, since the beginning of the school year, K through 12, we're down 28 kids. Five-year average is 14, so we are higher than that, but last year, we were down 27 at this time. So higher than the five-year average, but pretty relatable to last year. Any questions on the enrollment report? Um, financial reports also in your packet, nothing to note on the percentages wise. Um, just a quick update, MDE was onsite last week for a compensatory audit. We don't have the results yet, but they did just come in and audit our, um, data. And then we did have to do a, an unemployment survey on Monday that was due. And FYI, so the submission had 398,000 that we spent on that new summer unemployment. Um, I'm hoping that we'll get more data if all the districts submitted on where we're at with that aid, because once that aid is gone, then that's the district's responsibility. So just a quick update on that, if the aid runs out, that'd be 400,000 that we'd have to add to our budget. Uh, the 24, 25 audit's still ongoing, we're working on that. And then I was just gonna do a quick thank you to, um, Brad Watson at Adina, the trade house agreement was in there, and then Brian Bordwell, the teacher, who we got that done. That, this is awesome to get it off our plate and not have to.
Way early, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't have to worry about auctioning it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, Marcy, thank you. All right, and then the Superintendent's Report.
I'll keep it short. Um, this week, as you know, was Veterans Day on Tuesday, and I don't know if any of you got to go to the schools for their programs. Um, it's kind of amazing, I, I can only speak for the elementary right now, but, um, we talk a lot about, you know, what can our elementary kids do, what they can't do. It's amazing, though, that they can sit on the floor for 45 minutes and be absolutely respectful. Number two, um, they know what it means when the, uh, Legion does the Parade of the Flags, and how to stand and put their hand on their heart for the National Anthem. And they sang the whole thing, and America the Beautiful, on tune, never missed a word. So, um, for all the things we think they can't do, they can.
The good thing you weren't a music teacher, Peter. You didn't stick to the reading, I think it might have been a couple off tune, I don't know for sure.
But, yeah.
Maybe one.
Yeah. It's really cool to see, um, our schools recognize Veterans Day. And, you know, I know at the high school, it's much more different. Um, I'll tell you what, though, 1,800 kids are sitting for 45 minutes and they're being very, very respectful. Um, but it's, it's really a very, very cool thing, and so if we worry about our kids and their patriotism and so forth, don't worry, it's there. We just have to let them show it.
Good.
Yep. That's all.
Thank you. All right, we've got a list of future meetings there, you can review. Our next work session is December 4th. Um, and then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay.